Hi, Mr. Muhammad. Y'all can go as soon as I'm ready. I'm ready.
Okay, thank you for all for coming out. This is the regular meeting of the committee to save Jefferson County. And we thank you for coming out. We think this is a very important meeting because it's talking about the future of Jefferson County. It's talking about how the lines are being drawn. So we're glad you're here when you're interested in getting information because it's going to affect everybody's life. My name is William Muhammad for interview one of the co-chairs of the committee to save Jefferson County. And I just want to say before we begin that we've been involved in everything that's happened in this area over the last almost thirty years. So this is kind of like a culmination of it. I've always said that once we got this done, then I could retire. I could go home, but it don't need a lot of approval from the people that I say to. So I guess you had to die out of this stuff. But we thank you for coming out. And like I said, this is really big. This is big, the being in this situation. I am one of the plaintiffs on the case. And one thing I heard while we were having our meeting agreed, I heard that lawyers that are here, attorney Rice, attorney Roku discussing the differences in maps. And I really didn't know that there was a difference that's being presented by the the two different groups that make up our side. And so that's interesting because I'm going to learn something today. Because they talked about the map that our attorneys, these are our attorneys, Mr. Blackshire who has been known for years and he's been working on this a long time. Maybe for the last seventy years, I don't know Jim, whether it's been that long. But we have to realize that the two different groups, that's the point I'm trying to make, are proposing. Even though we're on combined case, they're proposing two different maps. And we need to think about that today. The map that they talked about that being proposed from our side of the case is a map that keeps, uh, this is like the county whole or the city's whole. It does not split boxes, it sounds like. To where even though our other friends that are on the case, they are proposing the NAACP Legal Defense Fund is proposing something different. So that's why this is important. We're glad to have you here, not going to hold you up because we're sad. Sad that you're doing football season. So thank you all for coming out. Give yourself a round of applause. Thank you, thank you. We're glad to have our media person with us. Job is that's got because we stumbled upon something during the last elections that whenever we put this stuff on Facebook, you know, I'm seventy-three years old. And I said this would provide any opportunity to retire. But I'm so far behind in this information because if we got a hundred people to come back to something, man, we'd feel like, wow, this place would be packed to the brim. But every time we hand something and John screams that we get thousands of people who look at it. So we really found a new way to get this information out. So thank you all, we're going to get started now.
All right, well, good morning, everybody. My name is Richard Rice. I'm one of the attorneys representing the Adakandi plaintiffs.
Yeah, my name is Richard Roku. I'm also one of the attorneys that are representing. We call them the Adakandi plaintiffs, but they're actually many plaintiffs, many voters. How like I think of that word plaintiffs, they just happen to be plaintiffs. In this case, because they brought the laws. But we have, should I, should I listen? Individuals deserve credit. They're voters who stood up and decided to help us in challenging what we believed were unfair maps that the county commission had adopted back in 2021 as part of the redistricting process that followed the 2020 census. Jim Blacksher, who's on the screen there, he, he, Jim's been doing this, I think, almost about as long as I've been alive. So he, he is the one that has a depth of knowledge that I think very few people have in this area in terms of voting rights and in particular redistricting. So Jim's going to give a presentation about the maps that are the one map that we propose as a group of plaintiffs. But before we get to that, I really do want to give a shout out to Alexis Adakandi. And the reason her name is first is because it's alphabetical, the way we listed them all. But there's also Julia Wadis was one of the voters. Cynthia Bomber, Janelle Brown, who goes by Nell Brown. And I think, Nell's here. And I, I think Nell can speak for herself, but I think maybe this case motivated her to run for office. So she's thrown her hat into the Thompson District fifteen state race that's coming up in 2026. Charles Wong, Eric Hall, Michael Hanser, William Muhammad, Dr. Muhammad, Tammy Smith, Fred Lee Randall, and Robert Walker. Those are the voters who helped us bring this case. And all of them participated in the litigation. They had their depositions taken, so they had to take time out of their schedule to help us push this case forward. The litigation team that brought this case on behalf of the eleven voters were Richard Rice, myself, Jim Blacksher, and Judge Clinton, who was going to be with us today, but I think he wasn't feeling well. So he sort of had to skip coming in this morning. So I'll give you a little bit of background and turn it over to Jim about the case. The case started, this case actually starts in nineteen eighty-five with, with a consent decree. Back in nineteen eighty-five, there was a consent decree that was acted that created two majority minority districts in Jefferson County. Because there had never been, there had never been majority, there had never been any minorities elected to office in the county commission. At the time, prior to nineteen eighty-five, the county commissions were elected at large. And there were three county commissioners. In nineteen eighty-five, it was a consent decree changed that. This case evolved from that because when the creation of those districts were necessary back in nineteen eighty-five, there's never been a recognition that the county has changed, you know, a lot in the last forty years. And the districts, but the county commission continued to keep the districts as they were. And we believe that was the intentional reason. And that was to minimize the power of minority voters in the county by keeping them in the same district and at very high elevated levels of voters in two specific districts. So we thought that that was, it was time for the county to take a serious look at the county and to draw maps that were maps that gave all voters an equal opportunity to choose representatives of their choice or to less representatives of their choice. That's what motivated the litigation. Because it was kind of like, we had maps that were frozen in time. And did not evolve, the power of the county evolved. And that sort of led us to bring this case. And our report, we were successful. We were able to convince a district court judge. Her name is Judge Madeline Hykler. We had a week-long hearing in front of Judge Hykler. We were presenting, I don't know, like at least five expert witnesses that testified. And something contained about another ten, fifteen live witnesses that gave testimony about the importance of this case to them as voters. And then the need, the things that they would like to see the county do. But that seemed to be impeded because of political structure that was frozen. So we brought that case and, and she, she agreed with us. And now we're at the stage of proposing remedial matters. Because the county typically in this type of litigation, the, the governing body gets the first chance of redrawing the map to make sure that it's consistent with what the judge has found. So in this case, the judge found that the maps, the, the districts that were drawn as part of the 2021 redistricting cycle were a racial gerrymandering. And that they violated the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution, which prohibits racial gerrymandering. So the, the judge, upon making that finding, then goes back to the parties and says, we need, you know, now you need to propose to me a map that remedies, that fixes the violation that she found. Typically, that is something that's left to the county commission or whatever governing body. It can be the state, right, a city. Usually when the judge has found that a vote map of the voting districts violate the law, the governing bodies give them the first opportunity to redraw the districts. In this case, Jefferson County passed on it. They decided, well, I shouldn't say that. It, it appears that they have. They didn't, they did not propose a map to the judge that would fix it. So we then proposed our remedial map. It's a map that was, that we, the plaintiffs drew, the Adakandi plaintiffs proposed using the expertise of Tony Fairfax, who is an expert in this area and has done numerous redistricting cases for voters. No, he's, he's sort of a voting side. He represents voters and been on the side of voters. And their efforts to get certain district maps thrown out and then help redrawn fair maps. So we proposed a remedial map. You may have heard about the other map that's been proposed by another group of plaintiffs. They're calling them the Kluh plaintiffs. And they are represented by the NAACP Legal Defense Fund. We've worked very closely with them because on, on the theory of liability, there really were, basically, we take the same approach, right? Where, where we've parted a little bit, and I don't really think it's much of a difference, to be honest with you. But where we have a little bit of difference is the approach on what the remedial map should look like. Our view has been, and Jim will explain this in detail. It takes a slightly different approach to coming up, I think, with the same outcome. Which is the court hopefully adopting a map that's fairer than the map that exists today. I think I've talked too much, but I'll turn it over to Jim. And maybe Jim can, can walk you through what, at least what the Adakandi plaintiffs proposed as a map. I have, Jim, I'm going to just need some of these maps so folks can see what it is that we're proposing. And then they can follow you along.
Can you share your screen, Jim?
You can share your screen to me.
Thanks, Richard. Thanks to Muhammad and everybody that's here, I can't see, but I appreciate you letting me participate in a video. Big thanks to all of you here for being, sitting at my computer and sharing pictures of the maps and statistics and that sort of thing. And I think Richard gave, Richard Roku just gave you a good background of what caused to this point the litigation. Let me emphasize two things. First, as he said, Judge Hykler is going forward with proceedings to determine what kind of remedial map she will order, as a court order claim, to be used in the upcoming twenty twenty-six primary and general election. We have already submitted our proposal, a proposed plan that's set for the Kluh plaintiffs. The county commission must file objections to our proposals Tuesday. And then, Richard, we have until Wednesday to reply to the rare objections. And finally, if, if there is a hearing, Judge Hykler wants a hearing, it'll be on the twentieth. But while all the remedial proceedings are going on before Judge Hykler, the county commission appealed.
The county commission appealed.
Is what I said.
No, you, you broke off a little bit there.
Yeah, the county commission has appealed and, and should be eleven certi- court appeals. And asks the court appeals to issue a stay of all proceedings until the appeal is resolved. And if the court appeals grants the requested stay, it would almost guarantee that there will be no matter place in time until the sixth election. Sixty-two, that would happen. But the appeal will take months and months and months to go through full breaking and already in a decision about the court appeals. So what happens in the court of appeal if the conflict to the county commission's request for a stay is crucial. And we very much have a, I don't know, a court of appeals proceeding out in there. But let's get back to the plan that we proposed. Let me explain the approach for you. First of all, sharing the screen from. Let everybody see this claim all right. This is a page one of our submission to the court of appeals explaining why we submitted this claim. And it explains that as we read the law, the court order plan may not disturb the policy choices that the county commission has made against that voting, except to the extent necessary to remedy the constitutional violation. And let me make sure you understand the difference between the constitutional violation in our case and a voter-wishing case. Even though, as Richard said, you know, we're all disturbed about the way that keeping intact previous plans kept whites tied up in two supermajority districts. The constitutional underlaw of the Fourteenth Amendment was one that we explain court as creating. And it does not challenge voter-wishing. It challenges the segregation of voters by race, separating voters by race between districts just based on race. And so regardless of whether it produces voter-wishing or not. So we find out to the district court. The district court, it ruled with the decision that's now a appeal that to follow the movement of black citizens, one student one hand, and place those citizens in districts one and two. Over the years, the commission parted from the judicial divisional criteria. It increased the number of census places, census places on the municipalities. Splitting municipalities, splitting twenty-five census places in, in the, in twenty thirteen and twenty five and twenty, twenty-one.
Jim, can, Jim, can we stop there to emphasize this point, right? It's a very important finding, the court map. As the popular, as, as the African-American population of the county moves out to different areas of the county, what the judge found is that the district, the county commission followed them along with district one and district two to keep the black population in those counties, in those districts. That, in that, you know, you let that sink in, right? That's what the county commission was found in the document. So as black, as African-American communities move, you know, voters moved out to suburbs, moved out to other areas, they tried to track that movement to keep those voters in district one and district two. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Jim, I didn't mean, I just thought that that's a really, that's a very significant finding.
So the remedy since the racial gerrymandering, the segregation of, of period out primarily by splitting the values of municipal, by splitting municipal values. That means putting, for example, as you said, here municipalities like Black Oakdale, or what, Uber, Midfield and so forth, putting those municipalities into permissioned districts. And thus diluting the strength of their elected representatives before the county commission. We told our head lawyer, Tony Franklin, to start with a plan, a last lawful plan that was adopted by the county commission was in twenty thirteen. The Department of Justice declared under Section five of the Williams Act, the twenty thirteen ruling. And of course, only a few months later, the district court gave away the section five. So, so the county commission, they can no longer rely on the Section five of the Williams Act to justify continuing the, the way they have backed the history of the law. So we asked county to start with the twenty thirteen ruling. And tried to restore the boundaries of all municipalities that were according over the second table. And that's what he did. And here is the map of the Kluh, I think, Adakandi.
You've got it.
We have, that is, that is the Adakandi plaintiffs' proposal to Judge Hykler's court order claim. And as you can see, even, and even though Tony was inclined to do this, manages to keep beast of being obvious in his or her current district. Here's Garrett and Desafer, Tyson and Westhand. Here's Lowen and I guess the St. Xavier Hills. Here's Scale, Olden, and then the toll booth. Here is Martin, here is Russell. And here, oh, interesting. This, this, this plan, sure, that's only, it stores, it stores all the boundaries of every municipality in Jefferson County, except for Birmingham, West St. Xavier Hills, Mississauga. Well, I'll get it in a minute, General. There are five municipalities in this, but that's all. And here, here are the numbers. Now, this eighteen plus, well, that means voting age, okay? So the voting age population in this was a target. District one becomes sixty-nine, nine percent. District two, sixty-three, one, seven percent black voting age. District two, forty-eight percent black voting age. District three, seven percent black voting age. District five, thirty-three percent. And let me show you here. Only breaks down figures of each district and shows you which municipalities probably is different. So here's district one, here's a picture. And here's maps, I can use this color scheme, I can see the boundaries of various municipalities all. Here are the risks, the cities that are in district one. Forty-four point nine percent of the city of Birmingham is in district one. A hundred percent of Centaun is in district two. Ninety-one point five, one, one point five percent of Irondale, which had used to live nowhere near the border of my state. Is, is in district one. A hundred percent is in district one. Just a fraction of Pencil goes into district one. And that again, is just a balanced population so that there's less than one percent deviation in own businesses. But there are some zero population slivers created by the county laws and jurisdictions. Of West St. Daniels and Mountain Brook. So really, only these three states that are really split, only these are really involved or split or present. Um, Irondale and Birmingham, that is. If you go down to District 2, stop if anybody wants to pause. Here's District 2, this is Chief Dyson. Uh, you can see most, it's mostly Birmingham. Here's some Hallmore, Fairfield, Midfield, and so on. And you go down to the table, it could probably do. You can see that forty-six percent of Birmingham is in District 2. Uh, all of Overland is in District 2, all of Fairfield in District 2, all of Midfield. And then there are these slivers in the population that just don't really count because it was created by the way that the county commission would have chosen. Okay, so that's District 2. Let me look down at District 4. There it is, that's the rest of the main course of the, of the Jefferson thing. It's got a hall passing, as you can see, going down across the road. Lots of municipalities in District 3, and they show up in this tape. You can see all the municipalities that are a hundred percent located inside of District 3, including Vessin. Which is the biggest split of those. And there's still a sliver of Birmingham. Birmingham is so spread out, because the way the state was only covered, which you can't avoid, so it's some part of Birmingham. And there's a splitter of Uber, again, that was having to be included, less than one percent of Uber is in District 4. I'm sorry, District 3, again, because of a population quality difference. Garden Dale has a splitter that's just not really, is unpopular. So that's where so many of the whole municipalities are located in District 3. District 4. Eastern Jefferson County, starting with Trosco, Leeds, Pensive, Garden Dale, so on. Here, here's a table that shows all of Trosco, Garden Dale, Clay, Leeds, Olddale, Grayson Valley, Mount Holler, Amberly, Lawyer, Morris. Trafford, Trafford County, but there's one I didn't know about. And what you can really go. Uh, and County Line County. See, you've got to understand that in order to draw these districts, the present day purpose is, county had to use the municipality boundaries that it created through the census in 2025, not the ones that were used in 2020. So there's some, actually, some recensus purposes, County Line County, Trafford County. The county have, Garden Dale is split as seven, seven percent in District 1. Um, Birmingham, of course, has a little bit of a district. West St. Daniels has four percent in District 1. So again, we're looking at only five municipalities that truly are split within the issue districts. So finally, it's District 5, which is the old mountain distance, Mountain, West St. Daniels, so on. Almost all of Uber is there, almost all of West St. Daniels, totally all of Down Brook. And then the triangle of Birmingham, a fight with the Rockville. And that's pretty much your vast split, you spell it, Uber, West St. Daniels, Down Brook, Birmingham, and Rockville. So that's the, uh, I don't know if I have this proposed plan. Are there any questions before I, I show you the plan that we included?
Just curiosity, I'm, I know I'm a big guy, but I'm just looking at, which district do you all predict would produce the majority African American county?
The third, the third African American.
If, if you look at, you know, and I, it's, you look at the population summary.
Okay.
Right? Uh, the, the goal is, so you understand, this, these population summaries, right? You look at, it has, for District 1, it has the percentage, you see AP, BLK? That means any part black, right? And that's data that's drawn from the census. Those people have, when they mark the census, you can say similarly white, similarly black, any part black. That's, that represents, so District 1 on this map is sixty-four percent, sixty-six, sixty-four percent any part black. This is, it's basically the same to District 2. District 3 is forty-nine point seven nine percent any part white, based on this map. And the important point to make is that these demographics fall out of following one simple principle, two, actually, two simple, two principles. One is to try to adhere to the map as it existed back in 2013, as close as you can. And second, to not, to minimize the number of municipal splits. When you follow that principle, this is the map you get, and these are the demographics you get. Which simply supports the position we've been taking, that the map that was adopted in 2021 intentionally split many more municipalities than it was needed to in order to try to put, as the judge found, follow black voters as they moved into different areas outside of the city of Birmingham. If you just simply say, we're going to take an approach, we're not going to really look, we're not looking at race, frankly. We're just going to draw a map that tries to minimize the number of municipal splits, this is what you get. So you have to work pretty hard to avoid this. In other words, you have to start splitting a lot of municipalities in order to get a different map that actually going to get the map that you have today, which is the 2021 inaccurate map. So to answer your question, the, the, the demographics are what they are, you know? And you end up, you know, we didn't set out to draw a sec, a third majority minority district. That could have been done, I believe, if we wanted to. But that was not, that was not what we set out to do. You know, or Tony Fairfax, actually. He set out, he was just given instructions, look at the populations, look at the map, as Jim said, look at the map as it existed in 2013. And follow this principle, try to minimize as many municipal splits as you can. Birmingham has to be split, just for the sheer fact that it's got more people in it than each district can have, right? Right, it's the largest one geographically. And it's safe, as Jim was saying, Birmingham's really kind of split up itself, because it's annexed a lot of different areas. But you could not put Birmingham into one district, because it has more than a hundred and thirty-four thousand people living in the district. And that, and that's the ideal, you, the target is, if you look at the demographics, you see where it says ideal district population, right under the table. It says total population is six hundred seventy-four thousand, right? Right below it, it's the ideal district population says one hundred and thirty-four thousand. You see that number? The reason you have that number is because the constitution requires one person, one vote. At least it tries to get you as close as possible. No, which you can't have a district with five hundred thousand people in it, and then another district with only a thousand people, and they need to get the vote. They need to get one commissioner, right? That's the basic idea behind it. So you, when you take the entire population of the county, you divide it by five districts, that gives you the ideal population. Now, the law recognizes you can't always the idea because of how populations are spread out in the county. But you have to try to reach, I think, the goal that we set, which is the same goal that the county set, is plus or minus one percent variation from ideal. So you'll see the way this map is drawn, all the districts are within one percent, either higher or one percent less than the ideal population district. So if you take ideal population district, you start with the 2013 map, and you try to not, you try to minimize the number of municipal splits. This is what Tony Fairfax gets. Sorry. So that, that's how we approached it. And we think that's completely defensible, right? Because the attack that we get is, oh, you're just focusing on race, you're focusing on race, you're focusing on race. And, and, you know, obviously, race played a role in it, because that's what the county was doing, right? You can't ignore it, but that's not what our map, what our map drawer did. Our map drawer started with, let's just look, a neutral factor, big neutral factor that the courts look at, is keep political subdivisions together to the extent that you can. And that's what our map drawer did, and when he did that, this is what you get.
I got, I got a question, which is kind of, Paul Sutcliffe, what did, but he just came to my mind. If you say one day and one vote, has that ever been, anybody filed a lawsuit because the way we set up and such a way to discourage people from voting? That seven, that seven one day thing? Anybody will file a lawsuit?
You, you know, I, I, I don't know if anyone's filed a lawsuit, that, it, it, you know, you can pick out a lot of different things. For example, why does Alabama only have basically one day voting, right? It doesn't have any early voting. You know, you can't, some people say absentee ballot is kind of a form of early voting, but it's, but it's not. You know, you have to jump through a lot of hoops to vote absentee, right? Why don't, why not, why can't you just have the polls open like some jurisdictions do, for two weeks before the election? So you just show up to vote, right? And you just have poll workers, it's much more convenient. Why don't we vote on Sundays, right? Well, there's a reason why, or Saturdays, so there's a reason why we don't vote on weekends, right? Because working people, work, most of them, not that working people don't work on weekends, but, but working people, most of them actually enjoy them.
What do you think?
There's been, no change, I, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure that some challenge would work unfortunately, but I'll let Jim answer that question. Jim, are you still there?
Not, I'm still here, what's the question?
The question is, why have, why hasn't, why hasn't, it isn't viable for Alabama to file a lawsuit, but with the fact that it's voting, you know, the opportunities that it gives for voters to vote are so limited in comparison to what other states do.
Oh, that's because of our nineteen one constitution. I'm agreeing, where it was established, anything white supremacy in this state forever.
Yeah. Yeah. The next question. Yeah, I got it. And, and the thought has crossed my mind too. Why, why can't we in Alabama have more than just one day of onsite voting? You know, people coming to vote, without having to vote absentee, right? You can do it still, I mean, you can vote absentee, but you gotta go to the courthouse, bring all your ID, fill out your affidavit. And, you know, and then give a reason why you can't, why you're not there on the day. Some people have to fudge that a little bit, you know, but.
You say, I think, I'm not going to give you home that day, so that's a question of thought.
Yeah, so that's always the response, is that, well, we really do have where we voted, it's just, you, you, we don't call it that. I'm sorry, so I think Jim was going to present the other man, and talk a little bit about the map that's, that, um, that we were defensive about. Who, you know, there are great lawyers there, have the ultimate respect for the lawyers that work for the LDF. But we had just a slightly different approach, because I think our, it's not that, I think we both have the same objective. Um, it's just, we think our plan is more defensible. Because you gotta, you gotta face the reality of what kind of bench you're facing, right? What are the judges that you're, you're gonna, you know, how are they gonna look at, and the way the law's been evolving with the Supreme Court that we have? You just gotta, you gotta deal with that, with that reality. And we thought that this map accomplishes the goal, which is giving more fair, you know, fair representation. Um, but it runs less of a risk of getting reversed. So. Hey, Jim, you want to talk about the LDF plan?
I have a picture of it. As you can see. Numbers up here. There's a picture, here are the numbers, this is, it splits sixteen municipalities. And here are the numbers, voting age population.
Yeah.
Right there.
So it's District, if you, can you, can y'all see those numbers?
No.
I can see them.
Then, then District 1, any part black is seventy-six percent. District 2, any part black is sixty-four percent. District 3, any part black is twenty-five percent, twenty-five point eight percent. And then District 4 is twenty-five percent any part black. And District 5 is basically fourteen percent any part black. Yeah, and that, that was their approach, um, that their expert used, a cart. Um, they, you know, they tackled it the same way, you know, we just, we, we both agree that District 1 and District 2, that those districts right now, as they're currently configured, are not constitutional. Right, we think, we both agree that there's, that they violate the constitution. Their expert came at it one angle, um, and this is the map that they think remedy's violation. Um, our, our, our expert took a, a different approach, a broader approach, which sought to minimize municipal, um, splits. And we end up with our map. You know, it's just, it's just two different approaches.
Just, just thinking out of the box for a minute, you think there's a chance that the court will adopt your plan, draw its own plan?
Well, yeah, it, it, that, that's a, you know, that's a good question, Congressman. I think that we, that given, we're in a bit of a rush, right? To do this, because the county is taking the position that you have to have a map in place a year before the election. And no more, I mean, more than a year before the election, right? They're, they're taking the position that a map has to be in place for, the election is November of 2026. Basically, yes, a year in advance of the election. And that's because they claim that you have a one-year residency requirement. I've always found that that, that's an odd reason, you know, um, to have, you know, I'm sure a lot of incumbents wouldn't mind, you know? I mean, you know, that is not going to apply to the incumbents, because they're in the districts, right? So it's, it's hard to say why, why, why that is an ironclad rule. The law's pretty clear that the court can move that.
Yeah.
Right, but, but, um, they've pushed this, so she's, Judge Heikle has accepted their accelerated schedule. And now, they propose a deadline, and then they say, oh, but no one can meet that deadline, so we can't do this now. You gotta push it off to twenty-four, right? It's been basically jargon. And, and we've said, no, we can actually meet it. Um, and that's why we proposed these. Whether she's going to adopt.
Recording stopped.
I think given her, given the, the, if she's gonna agree with them that a map needs to be in place a year before, then she's gonna probably take one of these two maps.
Right.
Uh, if she feels, and Jim can correct me on this, if she feels that she can modify that, she may look at these maps, and then decide that she needs to hire a special master to go and draw.
Now, given the matter of the appellate court's now, would you speculate that your plan would be the one most acceptable?
Well, I want Jim to speak to that, but yeah, I think, I think it is, because, because we start from, you know, the perspective of, you know, let's, let's just, let's see what happens if you decide not to minimize the, the number of municipal splits. Let's not, let's not think about what the racial demographics are going to be of each of the districts. Let's just say, we start sort of with the existing 2013 plan. And, and we, we start there, because that was when, y'all, y'all have heard a case called Sheldon v. Holder?
Yeah.
Right, yeah. That's, that was the year that the Supreme Court essentially gutted Section 5. So the, the, after the 2013, so we start with the 2013 map, which was the last map that was in place at the time that Section 5 was effective. So when you remove Section 5 from the picture, then our view was, the county needs to try to take an approach of redistricting that tries to just look at a criteria that the courts have found is a valid criteria. And that one was to minimize municipal splits. Apply that to the map as it existed in 2013, and what do you get? And this is what you get. So I think that's defensible, because we're going to say, you know, our expert, and he testified, um, you know, Tony, Tony Fairfax, some of you may know him or not, but he testified that that's what he did. He just, he started from where the county commission would have had to start, in 2020, with a new cycle, with a map as it existed, you know? Which was the 2013 map. And then applied this principle, and this is, without looking at the racial demographics.
And one other thing, in defense of this plan, uh, I live in three. I moved from two. That for the map, like fifty plus, maybe even fifty-one now.
Yeah, no, and, and that's, and, and that's, right, exactly. And that's why, that's why, it, it really shocked me when I saw this approach. And, and Tony Fairfax produced this map, I'm going, really? This is what you get if you just tried to minimize municipal splits? Uh, but I was like, really, truly, truly, uh, I was surprised that that would be.
Hey, I wanted to ask you to do one other thing before we go back to Jim, but then, could you tell me that the districts, so I can compare them side by side? Get two different plans, because that's something that we really got to talk about. Whether we talk about it today or somewhere else, because they combined the two cases, but they asked for two different planning. And, 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 you know, it's kind of, I, I just had to say this, it's kind of like, the, the, the legal defense side, the legal side, they kind of like taking priority over this, like this place, when it's definitely different, as far as it relates to our people. Based on what I learned today, and I'm applying.
Well, I guess, fine. Yeah.
But I'm learning today, it's not the same thing.
Well, the, the thing, you're, 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 you're correct that when it comes to remedy, we have two different views of remedy, or our experts do. Okay, about what would be a defensive map. And that's, that, that, but when it comes to the question of whether the map that was drawn in 2021 and voted on, right, backed by the county commission, we're both, we're on the same side. They, they think that that map is a law.
Some say that map was.
Yeah.
Can you go back, Jim, can you go back to the population summary?
What I was asking was, I was thinking, well, I, the town, but I missed it when he did some. You know, their map was calling for what percentage of blacks, and one, two, three, four, five, and I was calling for. And I was calling for what percentage, so I can do, you were finding those, they were taking elementary students compared.
So the clerk's plan is to call for seventy-six percent, any part black in District one. And sixty-four percent in District two. Twenty-five in District three. Twenty-five percent in District four. Fourteen percent in District five. So, for the county plan, it's District one at sixty-four percent, any part black. District two, sixty-four percent. District three, forty-nine. District four, forty-nine. District five, thirteen.
Yeah. The, 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 the reality is that, is that the, you know, I, I, you know, I, I really don't, I don't, I don't know how to explain that difference, to be honest with you. Uh, maybe Jim understands it. Um, but I think their, 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 their thinking is that these, um, that their map also will give an opportunity for voters, um, to elect more candidates of their choice. I mean, I, I really don't want this to be a situation where we're, you know, arguing against them. I really, I, I really don't. I, I don't, I, I don't wanna get into that kind of thing. I, I have a lot of respect for the lawyers at LDF. I think they've done a fabulous job litigating this case. They put a lot of evidence on. They're largely also a, a very important reason why they got liability finding in this case, because they did, they really a heck of a job in litigating this case. Um, I don't, I don't know the remedy issue, right? I don't know why, I don't understand all the reasons why their expert, McCarty, felt that this was the most defensible plan. But that's, that's the plan that they, that they felt most comfortable with. Um, and we just, we, it's like a, it's a, it's a small disagreement among the friends.
But, but, but I'm looking at the, the numbers, you know, as they said, they said, uh, uh, numbers don't lie, the figures don't lie, the lies show and fix.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
Forty-nine percent, number three.
I, I understand, and, and, I don't, I mean, I'm just, what I'm trying to say is, I have not analyzed, to be honest with you, I have a lot of things on my plate, so I sat there, and, and I was concerned with our plan. I analyzed our plan. I was, I thought Tony did a really good job, Tony Fairfax did a really good job on this. So I focused on our plan, I really did not, I really, their plan is what they proposed, and that's fine. Um, all I wanna say is that they, we would not be where we are today without them. I just wanna make that.
Oh, yeah, no question.
You know, they, 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 the, the LDF did a fabulous, those lawyers did fabulous, fabulous job, and their experts. When we got to trial, they were knocking it out of the park. And we would not, I, I'm, we would not be here today without them.
I mean, you know, I'd be excited, I'd maybe say, let me explain now, this is the, the numbers that I showed you from the court plan. Yesterday, a day before yesterday. These are the correct numbers.
See?
They, they have three of them.
Okay, so it's now.
So I have to.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well, that's a huge difference.
Right, it is.
Yeah. So you see, that's not, hey, judge, how are, that, that, those are the correct numbers, right? So Jim, I thought so, I was gonna ask you whether you were looking at the corrected table. But, but if you look at that table, you see that table, it's, it's, they, their expert used a population round a little differently. They named District four more fairly, right? Where ours, our.
So what the numbers reflect now in terms of majority of blacks in each district?
It, their, their correct map, which I, I, I was wondering if that, what you earlier displayed was the correct one, or was it? This is the corrected table that they put in.
And.
As District. Right. Uh, District one, in, in the proposed remedial map, okay, the NAACP LDF's expert has put forward, District one is sixty-two point seven-six percent, any part black. District two is fifty-seven point six-eight. District three is thirty-five percent. District four is forty percent, and District five is thirteen percent. So where the difference really is, is how the population, between District three and District. Yeah, you can take back their, yeah, you can take, their, their maps, their maps, a solid match. They just. Right. Exactly. So, so, so I think, you know, you see, I was right, LDF is, they, they did the.
Yeah, I think one of them was correct.
Yeah. Yeah, I, because when I was looking at the numbers that, that Jim first put in the table, those are the numbers that exist now.
Yeah.
You see, when you write down seventy-five percent and all that, that is what I think the districts look like right now. Okay? Which is, which is why, that was the mistake. They took a table showing the existing demographics, which was the first table we displayed. And then this table here is the corrected table, and they cocked their error. And then this case, this table here is the table that was corrected, that is attached to their proposed map. Can you put the map up, Jim? How it looks? You, you don't have it?
There, Mr. Man, it's, it's here somewhere, folks.
There, there. There's the map. So. It's, it's similar to ours, it's just where, where the populations, they, they don't follow the principle as much of minimizing municipal splits. What they're trying to do, I think, is back out the changes, you know, where the county, when they were drawing their district, was trying to draw the line to follow the population movement of African-Americans.
Yeah.
They, I think their expert just reverses that and undoes that, right? And ends up with, with a map that looks like that, I think. I'm not, that, that may not be.
Now, when you say add them now, are you talking about twenty-eight, or are you talking about twenty-one?
Twenty-twenty-one, the, the demographics of twenty-twenty-one.
Well, everything we talk about is based on twenty-twenty-one demographics.
Correct. Well, the, 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 yeah, we don't, we don't, the, the, the way the map, the, the population, yeah, the population numbers are census numbers. You don't, you don't, there, there are estimates that are put out every year, but you don't, Jim, am I right? We don't, we're not whining on those estimates, right? This is all twenty-twenty census data. Did I lose you, Jim?
So can I ask a question? So is there more African-Americans in Jefferson County than white Americans?
No.
Okay.
There's not.
Okay.
Um, uh, the, the population of African-Americans in the county is about forty-three percent.
Okay.
Is that right? I think that's right. It's in that, it's in that range.
It's twenty-two, twenty-three.
If, if you add minorities and add Hispanics into that, the minority population is about forty-eight percent.
Okay.
Of the county. Um, so, so it's, yeah.
Is that now, or you still refer back to?
That's the twenty-twenty census data. It may be different now, you're right.
And I just wanna say this, that that's probably in there, and I say this everywhere I go, with us.
But, but they rely on twenty-twenty-one census.
Okay, for this, okay. But I'm saying, because we do not do census. That's why we got all these black and white people, we count them, but we do census as a culture.
Yeah, no, that's, that, that, you're right. I mean, that's, that, 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 now, what I'll say is that the, the folks who do the census, well, I cannot say that for the people who are in power now. Okay? I did, I was, I'll add to that, right? But I'll say that for prior administrations, the folks who are running the census, they understand that their, our response rates differ from community to community.
Yeah.
And they try their best to estimate. They try to do things to figure out what that under-response rate is, and then try to make projections or corrections to their data that reflects this problem. I'm not sure this, this group's gonna do it, the folks that are in power now, right? I mean, they, uh, it, it, but, but it still does represent an under-count. I don't, I don't disagree with you, that, that in certain populations, um, you know, like, I'm Hispanic, right? So I know a lot of folks, I grew up in Miami, I know a lot of folks in the Hispanic community that just don't respond. Somebody knocks on your door, you go hide, right? I mean, that's, I mean, I hate to say that, but that's the reality. And that's even worse now, right? So, so.
Nobody's done knocking on the door anymore, that's when I was a little boy, you do it online, and we don't do it.
Well, you, you, you're absolutely right, and that, that is, that's a problem. And, and for a lot of communities, of, you know, minority communities, we have to figure out how we're gonna solve that problem. Otherwise, there's gonna be, continuing to be an under-count.
Why don't we take a step further, though, then? What about the percentage, the percentage of registered voters? Are there more white registered voters in Jefferson County than black registered voters?
No. I think they're about equal, is that right, Jim? Jim knows, he's, he's.
I think he may be. Can you mute it, Jim?
Hey, Jim?
Hi, no, I'm not muted.
All right, good, okay, I can hear you now, good.
I just didn't hear you half a second.
Do you, do you, do you, uh, what is the percentage of registered black voters relative to white voters in the county?
I don't have that figured, that, at hand, but my, but in general, I think, I think it's a higher percentage, but I don't know if you should. I don't have that number.
Yeah. So, so it's not, I, I don't think there's a significant difference between registered. Now, being registered, that's only part of, that's only part of. Exactly, that's, that's a whole different issue. Yeah, you know, you're, you're, you're right about that. I can figure out a theory, we'll, we'll bring that. I know I have a point, if I bring out that theory. So, uh. All right, well, is there anything you wanna say else, Jim?
Well, that's it. If you talk, you have to wait, you know?
Right.
The trial authority, what happens in the.
Right, and, and, yeah, that is a good point. And, and, and Judge Cullen can probably fill you in on, what can we expect from these, you know? We won half, we've won, we've, we've taken a very important, you know, this battle. Um, but I'm not sure, uh, you know, we're, we're facing, uh, you know, a, a more challenging appellate court. Now, I'll say this, they have not granted a stay yet, right? Um, typically, uh, they, we actually got a briefing scheduled that was entered yesterday. So the, the county's brief is due November tenth, is when their brief, on the, there are two issues. There's the stay, the stay issue, is where the county has said, because when the, when the judge entered her conclusions of fact, or her findings of fact and conclusions of law, she says, the map that exists now is unconstitutional. We're not gonna use that map again, okay? As far as she's concerned. That map's gotta change. The county was given an opportunity to propose a change. They said, oh, we're too close, we're a year out, we can't do it. Right, okay? And then the judge said, all right, well, voters, you propose your plans. You've seen the two proposals, I think I would be happy without it, to be honest with you. Those are good, even though Jim gave me a little heart attack there with the first table. But, but the, 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 so either map, I think, would be fine. Um, so she's gonna look at that. They have until Wednesday to file their objections, the county does, to the maps that we proposed to Judge Hykel. And so LDF and our plaintiffs here, the voters, we've each said, Judge, we would like you to do, we've said, we'd like you to implement this map. LDF says, we'd like you to implement another map. They're both five maps, okay? They both correct the violations. They do what Judge, what the judge said needed to be done. And that is propose maps that don't violate the Constitution. And that's what we've each done, and you've seen the results. She will now, uh, if there's not a stay in place by the Eleventh Circuit, if the Eleventh Circuit says, if the Eleventh Circuit hasn't, hasn't entered a stay, she will then order a new map. And that map will govern the 2026 election, even, even as the appeal works its way through. That's why they moved for a stay, because the litigation, the appeal, will not get resolved until sometime next year at the earliest. But by that time, it's too late to put in a new map, right? In the summer of 2026, it's too, no, yes, our position is it would be too late in the summer of 2026 to put in a new map. So if they don't grant a stay now, or if they don't grant a stay in this case, then one of these two maps is likely to be the map that gets put into place at least for the 2026 election. And then the Eleventh Circuit will consider the case, and they may agree with Judge, they may not, with Judge Hykel, they may disagree with her. They're arguing, you know? There's one thing lawyers know how to do, and that's argue. So there's gonna be a lot of arguments back and forth. And the Eleventh Circuit's gonna have to decide who's right, whether the judge committed error in her findings and her conclusions. But if they don't enter a stay now, that ain't gonna happen until at least six, seven, eight months down the road, at least on my, based on my experience. I don't know, Judge, would you agree with that?
I agree.
Yeah. So.
So you say now, so what kind of, kind of, when you say now, if they don't have a stay?
I, I, I think if they do not enter a stay, what would you say, Jim, by, by, it's unusual for them to, to have, uh, what are, what's called merit briefing, the briefing of merits? Right, right now, we're just briefing the stay, the motion for a stay, the request for a stay. We've briefed that, that's been done. The, the Eleventh Circuit has had it in front of them now for, um, at least, I wanna say, they've had it for a week, right? Because I think that's what all the brief, because the briefing was ex, it was really expedited, right? We had to file our brief opposing the, the judge, let me back. They first filed a motion for a stay with Judge Hykel, she promptly denied it, okay? Because why is she gonna stay in order when she finds that there's a violation of the Constitution? She's not gonna do that. But you gotta take that step first, you gotta ask the judge. She denied, they then immediately appealed. The Eleventh Circuit gave us until October sixth. So I, I have to take that back, we, we haven't finished the briefing of, of the stay. I was thinking of the district court. We filed our opposition to the stay in the Eleventh Circuit from October sixth. They had until October fourteenth to file a reply. So they had filed their motion. We have filed an opposition. They still haven't acted, right? They don't have to wait for the reply to, to enter a stay. The reply is due October fourteenth. Um, and, and not, not the thirteenth, because that's Indigenous Peoples' Day, right? Um, so, or, we used to be called Columbus Day. Um, and, 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 um, uh, so they have their reply, but what I thought was interesting was that they entered, and it may or may not mean much, but they entered a, a briefing schedule on the merits Friday evening, right? So they, so they enter a briefing schedule on the merits Friday evening when I haven't ruled on the stay. So if we get to the point where we're doing merits briefing, and I would like to break in whether the judge was right or not, that, I, my feeling is there ain't gonna be a stay. But I think, you know, if I had a Chris, I'd I'd be as rich as you are of us.
We have a copy of the remedy plan one that you passed out.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think I heard you say you have a copy of the remedy plan two.
Well, there's only one, we only proposed remedy plan, what plan? The the, what's called the autocondi, I don't know. Uh, LDF, they proposed a second one. I don't, I don't, unfortunately, I don't have copies of that plan. You want to add anything? I've done all the talking.
Well, uh, you've done all the talking because you've done virtually all the work.
I know. No, Jim's not.
We are, we are very, very blessed to have two of the best voting rights in the country, representing the Black community. And and you know Jim Black, and Jim Black, he has done voting rights work for as long as I can remember, and he's about the best he is, I think, uh, in this area. So we're very blessed, and we have a a very good judge, Judge Madam Heiko. And, uh, she she called for that she sees him, and and she chanced to see them, right? Richard and I have been sort of on the sidelines, but.
Yeah, I I I, Judge, I I hate to interrupt you, I'm not in the habit of interrupting a federal judge. But I'll have, I'll have to say, without the support of the commu, this is, you know, we've all been lawyers, we've all been at the trial, we all working on this case together. Uh, different, you know, you you you, you have different things that need to get done, you know, a lot of moving parts. And I can tell you, without the judges and Richard's assistance and participation, this case doesn't get done, okay? It just doesn't. So so I, you know, I I I appreciate the kind words, but but, uh, this is truly, because what are we doing? We're 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 representing voters, right? We're representing our community, we're trying to change things. That can't be done by just one or two people, right?
And I want you to be not deceived. All all five of the commissioners were not represented by the same offering that represents Donald Trump. All five of them. And, uh, they they have opposed us, all five of them. I think you should know that.
That's significant.
That's a guy. Yeah, there's there, unfortunately, this is a big, we're in a big moment.
Yes, and I'm a state attorney as well.
There are a lot, exactly.
Texas.
There there is an argument that will be had on October 13th. Uh, if you 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 can go on the Supreme Court's website, if you have the time or inclination to do this. And on their website, there's a live feed, and you can listen to the arguments. There's a case called Calley versus the State of Louisiana. That case may very well decide whether what we do here today is any future, right? Whether whether there are going to be any constraints on whether, because the thing, when you combine a bad Calley decision with the decision from last year called Alexander versus South, the State of South Carolina. When you combine those two, if if it, and I'm hopeful that the Calley case will not turn out as bad. The people, some people predict that it would just basically gut Section 2 of the Voting Rights. They've gutted Section 5. If they gut Section 2, they pretty much, you know, undermined, you know.
You're the homeless.
Yeah, exactly, the the people, the people who suffered to get it, to get the 1965 Voting Rights Act passed, all the suffering, pain, and loss that went to that fight, this court may undo it. And that's, you know, it just, it sets back the idea of having a democracy, right? So, but, you know, I'm keeping my hopes up high. I didn't think the Milligan case would turn out the way it did, and it turned out the way it did. That's the case that we had, that's the congressional rediscipline test, um, that that Judge Richard also involved in. Um, in that case, that's the one that created the second majority minority district, you know, for Congressional District Number 2, where we have shemari figures as our representative. Um, that I think, that's called the Milligan case, um, and I didn't think that case, I thought that case, you know, it was a close call, 1-5-4, and I don't know, you know, the question is what Judge Catalin's gonna do. Uh, he's one of the justices that kind of, he likes to say, "Oh, I'm so concerned," but then votes away the justice. You know, your words are not matching your actions, right? Um, so I I don't know. So I'm hopeful, then, that the same Milligan five will come to their senses and say, "We can't go, you know, and charge, unfortunately, being led by Judge Thomas, by Judge Clarence Thomas and Judge Alito." It's it's hard to understand, but that that that, you know, you're hopeful that the five held up on the Milligan case will actually come to the same conclusion of Calley and keep the Voting Rights, you know, law, uh, Section 2, as it was amended, keep it intact and not not undo it. Because I don't know where we, if they do that, I don't know where we're at.
Well, since ours is a constitutional thing.
Right.
Then it may not be all bad for us.
Not on this case, for now, right? Because the, because what, see, the problem is this, on the constitutional plane, Judge, you're right. The problem is, is Alexander, and that's sort of the, the way Alexander handles equal protection claims is very, it's 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 a challenge. We think we're okay, because we get the evidence we have, satisfies what the court said in Alexander, more than enough. And the judge, in her opinion, exhaustively discussed Alexander and gets it right by that case. But that case in the hands of wrong judges can can, will we have, I'm afraid.
You're right.
And and just, that's just the reality.
Can I jump in here for a second? Um, the audience needs to know that, uh, we, the autocondit, let us submitted the plan that we see up on the screen now. Uh, should it be, you know, the, the, over a year and a, a year and a half ago? The head office wanted. Uh, and if the court of view denies the commission's motion for a stay and says it will rule briefing for all the merits for all term, that's the time where there's no excuse for the commission not to settle this case and spin the tax bill. Can that maybe a role for the, for the, in you, the public play more fortunately in that regard?
Right.
It should not have gone on as long as it goes, it's not a hard case. When it's, it, and it could not be a hard case, it's so.
So if you like the plan that we from, we showed you that we've submitted to the court as, if you were Plan 1, uh, we've asked the county commission in discussions, as Jim was saying, we did that more than a year ago. Said, "This is what we would envision, you think it's a fair plan? It keeps municipalities together, that's important," all right? And, uh, they actually were, they, well, I shouldn't say they expressed interest. They asked Jim, the county's lawyer asked Jim after the deposition of Tony Fairfax, where Tony Fairfax talked about remedial plan, an earlier version of remedial plan 1, right? In his testimony, he asked for a copy. So, and then we we engaged, we sent it to them and said, "We would set if you agree to this." What's the saying, crickets? That's all you could hear, crickets? Um, and so if if, I think, hopefully, we're just saying, if if the, the Eleventh Circuit denies a stay, then the county has to do something, right? It can't, it can't use the map it adopted in 2021 anymore, it's gotta have a new map, and it's given up to the opportunity to present its map, right? So they're gonna, they're gonna need those two to rock and roll.
And what that, what that means is that we, the lawyers, cannot contact the commissioners. But you can, and so both black commissioners, you ought to feel like, like white on rights, convincing them to go for one of the, to go by a plan.
You can do that, we can't. You can do that as a citizen, right?
Oh, yeah.
As a citizen, you have to, right as a citizen, to position your government.
But let me answer this, um, attorney, so I need your understanding here. So this settlement.
There is no settlement.
The settlement, you know what I'm saying?
We proposed.
Propose, I need to understand the time frame on you, because I'm, you got to ruin me away.
Well, we proposed this back, Jim was back last summer? Hey, Jim, can you hear me?
Yeah, I had to go check my email, but it was, around the, we had a court with some of our lawyers.
It was last.
So I need your understanding of the time I have before they have a court. They just, they filed in the federal court.
Right, we filed, we have filed our, we filed our case, the NAACP, LDF filed their case. And and then we, um, we, we filed, well, early on, we moved for preliminary injunction, right? Um, and we're not talking 2024, is when we did this, or maybe 2023? Yeah, it was 2023, okay? In 2023, when we filed the case, in the summer of 2023, we filed a motion for preliminary injunction, asking the judge to immediately enjoin any further use of the map. Because we're anticipating the next election is 2026, so we know how long sometimes these things take. The judge did not agree with us precisely because of the election, part of the reason is because why am I gonna enter preliminary injunction when the next election is in 2026, right? So, but we wanted to get all the evidence out there, we wanted to make sure that that the judge understood our case, and a preliminary injunction here is a good way to do that. So as part of that process, the county's lawyers took what's called a deposition of our expert, you know, Tony Fairfax. He takes, you know, deposition is when you get in front of the lawyers, you're a court reporter, you swear yourself. Usually have, but he gave his deposition. And it's my understanding that after the deposition, there, some of the lawyers from the county were intrigued about what Tony Fairfax testified and the approach, that they asked that we email them the map, the the Tony Fairfax and the data behind it. And we did that, um, I wanna say it was quite a while ago, um, and had it burning. Because the case, remember, the case tried, the case, well, was it 2025 or 2023? Had preliminary injunction, then I guess we did a lot of discovery, and then there was motions for summary, there was a lot. I'm trying to figure out, trying to post the gap between 2023 and 2025. There's a lot wrong.
We had a trial earlier this year.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we had a trial early this year, we had preliminary injunction in 2023, and there was certain data.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we litigated, we had motions to litigate.
Now, I I mentioned that we can't talk to the commissioners, but we can to lawyers, and they would talk to, uh, Phil Lawson, the county attorney, uh, and and he educated, uh, to me, I guess, two months ago. They will, will be interested in talking once the circuit packs on, on the motion.
So that that's the thing, if the if the, the stay motion a lot of times is a big deal, because, because what ends up happening? If the, if if the judge, if they deny the stay, they have to have a map in place, because the judge's order is still, the judge says, "Do this," right? Unless, unless a higher court says, "Don't worry about that, it'll be resolved," you gotta do what the judge told you. And so if they, if so, if the stay is denied, then they have to have another map. And that's when they'll probably talk to us about another map. And and then once that map goes in place, because it'd be better to resolve it rather than litigate it, once that map comes in and the 2026 election is right after that map, we're right up on 2030 in the census again. And they're gonna have to read another map four years later, so it kind of doesn't make any sense to continue litigating. That's that's sort of the dynamic that's in play. That doesn't mean that they won't, I've seen crazier things, nowadays, I've seen crazy things, you know? But but but, yeah, I mean, that's, yeah.
Let me, I want to have a second, because, um, the court of views, they take some time. Thinking about other cases, like in Jacksonville, there was a preliminary injunction in motion. So it actually take a month or two, but they have to write a pretty careful opinion if they're going to grant or deny a stay that address the merits of the case and so forth. In the meantime, if Judge Heiko goes ahead, uh, and issues her order that's family, adopting a court ordered plan, that plan becomes the governing law, and there's no longer any need to settle at all. So, and there is some incentive for the court, for the county commission that they want to settle, to do it before Judge Heiko. This tells them exactly what plan they're gonna use until we can.
And and Jim makes an important point, I mean, I don't know when and if the court's gonna, the Eleventh Circuit's gonna grant a stay. They they could decide to do it in December, January, I just don't know, right? But my experience has been they usually do these sooner than later, right? Because they understand the dynamic, um, what happens, because there has to be a plan in place. And you can't run, I don't think you, they just leave a plan if they, that a judge is found to be unconstitutional, you know? You gotta do something. You either stay it, or you change the plan. Well, I'm an Alabama fan, so I love the game.
Uh, let me just say this about the two black commissioners. If they wanted to, neither one of them could have asked the court to re-apply the party so that they were with us rather than with the Trump group, but neither one of them did that.
Well, you got ten more, you got ten more minutes for the game.
I'm with Birmingham watch.
Birmingham watch. Do you have a question or anything?
I was gonna get with my, maybe get a phone, I really love this stuff, I'm pretty sure I had someone I could call to.